All the work that we ordered for six oh five. I think we're handing them out of the queue next time. Squeezing. We will.
Yep.
So today I'm here to go over the master park plan that was finished in the end of twenty twenty. We started that and that camera like one twenty one. I completed and remember it's summer. I know it's been. Talking to you guys earlier in the year when it was completed, but we'll finally have some time to talk about it with some other things later. Well. But I think we now just do all different things and any questions you guys have, you know, when they're done with the master park plan. You know, my vision, my goal, what my department, what my department do, we impart to the recreation for the city, you know, anything like that. So I maybe. Getting, you know. Let you guys know or just kind of get it out there and know where we're moving forward and what the community wants. And there's been some, you know, this has some input from the community. We had a comprehensive study done in two thousand and eighteen. That's. I mean, I don't know if you guys have reviewed that before, but that had a ton of comments about. That translated into this. This document will use for the next five, ten, fifteen years, you know, personally, I put it myself to, you know, kind of. Keep working towards to improve, you know, West Liberty as a whole. So the purpose of the plan, you know, is to see what somebody is for, looking for a stronger piece of the earth population. Really want a high quality of life and the improvements to existing parks will provide benefits to the existing residents, but then also. Upgrading our parks, improving our amenities will also bring people to this community, whether that is vegan, that has to potentially be. Future residents of West Liberty, that's the goal that we have in mind. And. That's been, for me, that's the biggest thing I have is that I want West Liberty to grow. But it parts in recreation is one of those things that young couples look at us or, you know. The children, things like that, that are top priority for trails, parks, those things like that, recreation. We do offer. A lot, but we could also offer. We have potential to grow, the city has potential to grow, I think we all agree there and. Usually this document is what's going to help hopefully push the park department forward with that. Um, I had this highlighting. I highlight, I got some highlights, there's some data that they pulled from like Muscatine County and stuff like that. And then it keep going. Yeah. So you see down at the bottom on page one, you have, uh, West Liberty had the lowest median age of the incorporated places in Muscatine County. With more than five hundred residents at thirty one point four acres. That is. Approximately lower than the thirty eight point two for the state of Iowa. And. That is having a young population relative to, you know, the county and the state, and that extends to parks and recreation and provides a critical mass of participants. And park users for West Liberty. That age group is a lot of people that potentially have children, young children, and that's who we're, we're kind of after with a lot of activities. Parks and all that stuff.
What, what did you on there?
Page just do page. And I know later on and then that it has a little bit more graphs and stuff like that that you guys can look over with. For Muscatine County, they use, they compare a couple other cities and Iowa like that with. Age and things like that. But no. When we go through this year, a community input, we had our parks board as well with their input, a little bit of my input, I kind of tried to stay out of it and let them. Talk with Brian from by states, I threw my two cents in every once in a while when I needed to, but you know, it's more for me to kind of hear what people are talking to. You know, besides just out in, you know, the nursery floor and things like that. So the comprehensive plan, there was a quote in there, the overall vision, so we're a community that prides ourselves on embracing cultural diversity, investing in the future of our town, our greatest assets, life, access of our youth. The strength of our neighborhoods and a commitment to honesty and openness. And we felt like that was like kind of spot on a little bit for us, like even six years later. Because that's where, you know, the parks and records that they use and the, you know, the strength of our neighborhoods and bringing those opportunities to. To those families that we're trying to hit and the diversity that we have also that we all come about. I'm gonna go to page. Seven for the water law. And this is from the parks and rec board. And you can see the strengths and the physical condition and maintenance of parks, we support and tourism. And I think a lot of that I recall from that meeting, this. What they're talking about is the mainnesses are the grounds of our parks and then our upgrades that we had already made. In twenty twenty and things like that. But then you see in the weaknesses inadequate amenities and aging infrastructure, the aging infrastructure is the best was their focus on that. And we know that and we'll discuss more of that here later today. And then opportunities, expansion of park and recreation offers operates reinvestment opportunities and then beautification. The beautification is something that's, I think. I know we need to do better job and that is adding more landscaping, planting more trees. Just picks up some areas, we don't always, it's not always in parks, we do maintain some other areas that. Rotary maybe it took care, took care of like twenty years ago, they passed it on to us and I'll use example, the West Liberty site by Ron Allen. Please go drive by it, it's got a face, it's been power washed, the new landscaping is a thousand times better. And there's going to be some crab apple tree, but you know, there's things like that that we take care of that most people don't mean that, but we do. But I think extending that into their part to something that my partner back in Parks and Record was definitely interested in and wanted. And then just more offering for recreation. We've got took on new sports, but obviously the more stuff we take on or staffing.
And I just wanted to add Nick, when under beautification, um, the partnerships that Nick reaches out and forms it. I mean, he works with the school, with the FFA, um, he's worked with, again, Rotary has done a lot of beautification projects. And there's been other organizations in the community and Nick is always open and always, you know, if they haven't reached out to Nick, Nick's reaching out to them. So that saves that, that saves the park. Part of those beautification, a lot of money in order, but then there's still that maintenance to it as well. But again, I just. I mean, I, I want you to, I'm sure you do recognize that Nick does a nice job of. Leveraging now with those partnerships for those things.
Uh, then right to you guys, geographic constraints and that is. The location of West Liberty is surrounded. Right. And. There's a map that has floodplains and that's a packet that you guys can look at later on and I'll just, you know, it'll show you. Railroad, railroad track, basically with that one concern for everybody, even public inputs. Being able to get to railroad park or anyone sound with the tracks, being able to get access to Kimberly, all those things. And then just public perception. That's always. All this is right.
For example, with the skate park for the longest time, the reason why, I mean, there was some feedback that when we worked on that years ago, that if we created a skate park, that that would bring all the hoodlums to town. And that there would be, you know, chaos, you know, in the streets because of the. You know, what skate park or skateboarders bring to the community and finally, you know, after some education and assurances, you know. You know. There's hoodlums everywhere, so whether we brought them by speed, you know, I mean, so that wasn't the case, you know, but again, it was that education of different types of activities. So it's diversifying activities too, because it's not just about. You know, the field type items, but there are other activities such as the pickleball, the basketball or courts. For the things like that, it's a diversification of activities within that, within our parks.
I'm gonna jump to page eight, then here for the weekend, the kind of work or something that I get talked about a lot or have thought of in this document. And the items that people that we miss is that we don't offer in our parks is drinking fountains, permanent restaurants. Adequate lighting or safety. You know, that would improve the visitor's overall experience. Imagine Kimberly, you know, parent with a young child, they have to run to the porta potty views to for maybe an accident with their child or.
Oh, I don't have to imagine it.
So I lived, uh, you know, I'm out or obviously if it's. Other places that just a permanent bathroom is, uh, we, it's, it's a thing that has, we need to start moving in that direction in our parks. We all. The quality of the source, I just the cost that I haven't been here that we pay every year for porta potties.
We probably could have built.
Yeah. That's, you know, the same as that sports complex and when it was built, I don't think they. Understood how many people would come for a tournament, but two total, two total toilets permanent. Is not enough for a thousand fifty people. Imagine that's in your house. For Saturday and Sunday, but we provide four extra. And that's the hard part. Right. We can have something in these running twenty fourteen, depending on the size of the tournament. That's a little help. Yep, like a little concession sign, yeah. So right now those two and then four that were the four porta potties and parking lot and maybe the last couple year maybe two and. Or two more to put in the middle.
So people don't have to walk to somewhere.
Yeah, because like T-ball. Kids running to the bathroom, trying to get back, they're in, they're already, they're already, you know, basically that's the game. So we tried to, or you know, make that, you know, it's not the best answer, but it, it helps a little bit for them. Yeah, friendship park, we finally added our porta potty to there. If not, you had to run to your house, you know, that's all you have. Railroad parks, I'll just add one. End of the trail. Universal one for everyone. One of the things they, you know, that people wants, my park board was. Had a couple of order numbers that are like, yeah, we.
And we have done a little bit, we just didn't go fully into it, but there are opportunities through FEMA grants. Where, for example, out at Dutton, um, you can look to do a, a shelter and bathroom combined. They offer different levels of grants for those purposes. So there's some things that we, we didn't follow, we haven't followed back through on it because again, it. It's more about the planning and getting those things on course.
Yeah, I noticed the option they gave for. Funding, funding sources.
Yeah.
And one of them is transportation, you know, resources as well as.
For the rail systems for alternate, yeah, alternate routes.
We can apply for more.
Bring out some grand stuff in this.
Yeah. They, they offered quite a bit of. Different resources.
Yep.
Yeah, jump to page eleven, scroll over the. The kind of rundown of what the park board that need analysis was and. You know, the things that work well is they have, you know, current staff which. In this process, we actually added another, uh, this will tell you, we only have two full-time employees, we are up to three now, after taking on these sports. Uh, we're up to three now.
New plus three.
It's me plus two. Yeah, and then. Then parking facility conditions, um, obviously been in transition, that's some park upgrades in the last couple of years. The utilization popularity of facilities, that to do with the Dutton and Kimberly Park as a whole, cool playground. And then upgrades to aging facilities. Uh, I think that had to do with Kimberly Park being. Taking on reuse sports. And then just the outdoor movies that we offer and some other things that we are bringing back the movie in the park this year. And we're not going to do the drive-in, we're going to do the part this year, so that'll be a picnic in the park. Friday night, so. Um, improvements I need and kind of went over some of the, just, uh, in the part areas around the parks utilization of available land. Update shelters, additional summer camps, splash pad. Uh, so I want to say that railroad part, someone must put that in there specifically. Uh, multi-purpose recreation center, trail expansion, more bike racks. Uh, my department programming is just more summer camps for any recreation really. We are bringing summer camp back this year, it filled up in five days. I'm only bringing back one this year, scheduling for me personally, there's a court for the second one, so, uh, we'll bring back and then, well, eventually I'll have two back on the, the calendar. And then. Operations and maintenance, um, you know, the trash cans, you'll notice you have blue trash can in the parks. That you have in your house and we are in the process of moving to eliminate those and have all permanent ones. And locations, you'll see along the new sidewalks that Kimberly Park, you have permanent trash can now. Next inventions or another location, we are, I'm trying to make process move to where that's everywhere. Because lid blowing open, trash blowing everywhere, it, it doesn't look good. And then if our garbage come, the garbage guys don't get to our, our cans in time to dump them, then. I get started like. Just like, so this doesn't affect our parks and that's a thing that I have been concentrating on. We, you know, we've already talked about where you're going to replace the ones downtown, uh, West Liberty here. And update those, those are like twenty something years old. So it just that kind of the beautification. Um, and so I need a compliance bathrooms, drinking fountains. Obviously new staff will be required if you have any facility expansions. And then one of the concerns was though, when we went to online registration, it was kind of confusing for some people. We are seeing a very high rate of people not wanting to. Just, uh, you know. Important if you better facing departments, this funding, we all know that. Sounds like it was. You know, then they said, uh, space and lack of use of the land, staffing level, they're just kind of depends on the season, things like that. Uh, amenities, water, restrooms, shades, concessions, trash cans. Kimberly Park pool and trail expansions. And if you jump down to what's the most important for our department for the next five years is. Kimberly Pool, um, partnerships and pursuing grant funding and then the rebuild trail, trail expansion, that's the log material. Connecting to other communities and things like that. You guys have any question?
I would just a comment, I'm hearing if we can talk about later, maybe, but maybe some educational pieces that can go out and like billing about maybe legislation and how. It might save property owner money, but how it would impact. But like parking wreck and this is the things that you as a property owner can do to help support your community. Um, so that we don't see that, that was sent away all the time.
Yep, I know the Iowa lead was going to start working on. Through their programming and their pieces just to try to better educate what the actual impacts are going to be. Um, again, I think it's still unknown because it hasn't been effective yet. Yeah. But yes, I agree that. Save you in taxes and dominating some money.
From page thirteen, this is the community inputs. And we held a event at the community center one evening and like twelve's. Well, fourteen people showed up to that, split up into two groups. We sent out to, I agree, what I mean, twenty some people, I think some just responded back with an email and. Think additional group comments. The first group is, uh, went over, uh. Upgrading Kimberly Park to reflect the port arts importance near the center of town, investment need to be made in the sidewalks, the floor, the shelters. Who feel all the residents, party must be addressed. Those are number one concerns and then green space due for new developments when they are being built. And then expand the existing trail connecting Waukegan Trail to Dublin. Uh, group two had expanding programming to local businesses and offer more opportunities for high school age kids. Pave and widen the nature trail at Waukegan Park and construct a bridge to connect the two sides of the park and then expand the trail, uh, network throughout the city, connecting parks, schools and businesses.
And we, um, group one, um, that is where the park set aside ordinance. So when you see such as the new vice development, then there has to be either a trail connection or green space plan. Or money funded towards, um, the park set aside to allow for those expansions or those additions of green space or trail use.
What's happening in vice?
So based on the vice development, they have to do, um, one or two things, they will either. The trail, the trail and, um, that is going to have a connection from the housing addition.
Front there, yeah, it's rainbow.
No, no, still have a separate trail.
They'll have.
Yeah. Yeah.
So from what I've seen on the plan is that he's going to have a, his sidewalks are going to come to the north side and it's going to have a couple of properties that are a little, I think a little bit of extra space. Where this trail is going to end at Dutton property.
Yeah.
And then we will be able to tie into that on the, on our.
Will be more than one way to get to that and if you live in that neighborhood.
Yes. That's the end of it. On my, on, on, once that's kind of done in property, then it's on. On me to figure out and how we're gonna, I want to do a loop around that and then come back to your new rainbow, uh, rainbow, uh, trail that you're going to have on there.
Yeah, I'm really happy to see that little sidewalk that they have planned that's.
Yeah.
And that fulfills the requirement.
Yes, with the park set aside ordinance.
Because they could have just squeezed those two lots together and would have never had access to.
Right.
Get air, we would have. Hurt ourselves there. Right, so we pass that.
You know, two thousand and twenty-one and then we'll follow up because Meadows will also have to, they'll also have to provide either a, uh, either an amount of green space or.
And they have that on the backside, yeah, they have that on the backside, they're playing the green space on the backside of that development plan, so for the one that's done by Oak Ridge.
Does that?
You changed it.
Land.
Just recently.
The one that he sent me has the green space on the backside.
Got a new one now, because they're doing something different with the electric, so that's why I got to go back. Okay, yeah, yeah, he just changed it, um, about two weeks ago.
The one that have, yeah. You know, written one, so.
Um, the additional group comments are, Mr. Henry, do you have some of them? Anything there?
I know, go ahead.
Um, these are for just people that emailed back that could not attend, uh, dog park, place Kimberly Park, I don't know, that's what our replace pool at Kimberly Park. Um, you guys see that's a common thing. Splash pad. Uh, existing shelters, upgrade, more enclosed shelters, ice cream. For cold weather activities. Permanent bathrooms. Uh, splash pad and then another dog park and those comments are basically copy and paste from comprehensive. Trail dog park, like. And when you get into this is what it's about, like.
Also, any comments about first on.
Dog park, they go into detail on this, I am not going to dive into depth like. But just to understand that on a dog park, you are going to have. Two parks basically within one area, because you're going to separate small dogs, big dog. And more other places will do it by breed on some type. Operated on people are operated two different ways is. Go to city hall and pay for permits for like a day or a season and officers can drive by and. Patrol and be, hey, you have to go there for me or you have someone.
Usually it's like a tag you can put on your dog.
Yeah, so, um, there's ways to do that. But bring in some money. And just do a free, but clean up is your big. Um, and also they all, uh, and I think it describes in there a little bit, they'll designate areas off because obviously if you have a dog, your backyard gets torn up, they kind of rotate, um, spots, so. The turf and that's your biggest. Money wise, um, cost is the turf because it's just going to turn to puddle, maybe you don't have any grass growing, anything like that. So they do have them big enough to where they can kind of rotate, uh, things like that, weekly or bi-weekly, whatever.
Um, right now, I mean, for the last, for several years, the impact of not having a dog park, what's happened is we've had, um. We've had several community members who are utilizing the cemetery. Um, as a park for pets and we even have it posted that there are no pets allowed in the cemetery. But we have a lot of folks that take their pets down there to walk and run. And then there's, you know, messes left or there's. Holes or things like that, and that's not the purpose of the cemetery and also we know. Like the fairgrounds as well, people take their pets over to the fairgrounds and we've had a couple of calls where we, there's been issues with pets over there and so again, it's. It's just not having a designated area that allows, you know, people are looking for a place to exercise, not meaning to have any harm intended, but. Without having a specific area, then you have some line, you know, you have some issues that occur.
Move up page sixteen, the next, uh, then we need or one of them was obviously trail, vice it all infrastructure and. I will, I, I can't tell you the year that the trail was done, it's been. Well over ten or twelve years that I know, maybe even longer. Point eight minus. And I, so many people like, we have to extend this, we have to add it somewhere. I get it, we're getting a little bit of rainbow, but there's no connectivity.
That's probably.
Anywhere else. And I think from Rainbow Dutton area now, we've got to get to Waukegan somehow, because crossing the highway is a part, it, it can be done. Other towns do it, but. That might be our biggest, our next where we could, it could be accomplished and we could do a trail along the grid. Uh, we might have to get some lands, you know, things like that, but I think that should be a big goal for us in the future. You get a little bit of sports complex area and then you get a little nature, get then go through maybe a little bit of disc golf area. We got a dog park at Waukegan, take your dog off the leash for a while.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not play a little basketball, whatever you want to do. Watch kids play baseball down there, some quality, like this lot, lot of possibilities with that. That's where I'm guiding them to look towards since Rainbow Drive is at our rainbow and then add, you're going to add that trail. I want to get a loop around that and somehow, um, and then get to Waukegan with my focus. Crossing highway six, we battled that, I feel like my entire career here since I trailed it and we just never moved forward with anything like that, so.
We had a couple options, I mean, Leo had mentioned where they worked in other communities is doing a, um, they actually can put. With the DOT's permission, um, a lot of times that falls into grants, um, allowing for, you know, um. Other transportation means, um, and they'll do a, like a tunnel underneath where it comes up and they could do a tunnel underneath that section there between Garfield and. But the other ones are usually just again, crosswalks lighted, you know, there, but it has to be a partnership with. Again, for the highways with the state to.
I know like at highway six, we're ready next, that where the trail ends. I've always, I've seen other places where they, that's a stoplight, but the only time it's red is when someone comes up and it's. Yeah, it's the only time.
There's one of those in Coralville near.
I was gonna say Wisconsin.
They have lot, even say they're in their downtown where they just have a stoplight because the blocks, intersections are so long that they need people to cross and things like that, but.
This is like Route River, Wisconsin, anywhere where they have the agencies that taken over the old railroad system, they cross major highways and that's how they've established it. It works really well and, um, again, it was identified, I think before Nick was. When we, there was a group of us that had several years ago started working with the trail system. The city, um, we were able to, um, over off of Prairie Street, we were able to. Um, get the, the section of trail there, um, that's under the city's name and likewise, um. The other part of it was is that it was identified. The other part of it was is that it was identified, we had two trailheads, one on the other side of Watsi. Where you're originally talking about and then the other one was maybe possibly our old dump station would make. Um because of DNR would offer up grants to turn those into trailheads, so.
I'm gonna move on to page seventeen and I kinda tie in splash pad and really move together. Um because this can be two totally separate projects. Those splash pads that you see are just free. At two different systems, the new recirculation or straight away, um cost benefits be there way um. It's like I have some man um like that or you know, when you build, if we build in the tool in the future, I'm gonna slash speakers. But. As I said, pool obviously is going to be our, at some point it has to be the one actual concerned about uh with its age. And then now we're gonna just get into some maps and I think a little bit it's uh grant stuff, I'm not gonna go over a lot of you guys on that um. But you can kinda see they laid out on the map for future development, you guys all know the north is kind of been. Being like a top, maybe a top priority of expansion for West Liberty. Um they have a proposed trail, kind of just a rough idea. Going north, but also I mean.
That was identified in the comprehensive plans by the community was to um move residential north. Um around the Dutton complex and just a quick sand and then complete a trail around that section.
And then Brian did a really good job, um he gave um in page uh twenty-two, when he puts together for commands and stuff. He listed us do that uh we and Tara mentioned and then uh the set a type program which we've already uh. We did that portion of it, we uh. Elizabeth Hansen was here, uh there's a bunch of other ones, um I've looked up a few of these. They are very time consuming, they are repetitive grant, you've gotta have money to match though. It does not hey, apply and be like, I don't have a million dollars. You gotta have nothing, you gotta have a million dollars.
You know, um the diversity of our city was um. Thought about for other grants, like since there's like specific grants specifically for like communities of color, it's what's already is. That that might be something we.
What it was covered for, you know, project wise um.
Especially for like beautification, you know, stuff like that, so.
Then we're gonna move into, you just have uh basically some. Maps of West Liberty where to give you the existing trail, uh parks and that, it'll kind of tell you guys where. Um where everything's located, you can see three little tiny green dots on there, there are the paintings. But uh but uh there uh. That's there, kind of give you an idea of what we have and then you have floodplain. And then you see the floodplains, obviously all of Watsi is like that. Done, yeah, it's a little portion of it, other than that, you know, it's not terrible. Let's get uh get in a page thirty and thirty-one, you're getting into uh age for kind of the West Liberty that you're. One that I did find interesting is. Let's see, that's. From fifteen to nineteen year olds, we are very, from two thousand nineteen. And we have a very high number of fifteen to nineteen year old kids. Um and I will say that is one area, so we do not, we just don't provide anything and I get it, they are very busy, those are. High school age kids that are process sports and show wire, just a hundred things are going on. But I do think it's an area where I need to probably try and focus and see, but I do think maybe adding something that would be. More to their, to fit their lifestyle that they're into. There's a lot of different things out there.
What are the fifteen nineteen year old women, that that number of the men.
I do remember West Liberty when I coached and stuff, that there were some classes that were very female dominant.
Yeah, when Austin was in kindergarten, though, there were fourteen boys and two girls.
If your mother's love sons, you understand.
E-sports teams.
I will say, as someone who has worked the children's department at the library. Teens need other stuff to do.
Oh, uh back on twenty, page twenty-nine is gonna go over they. Maybe we had a fourteen point six population, sixty-two years or older, significantly significantly lower than it appears. The low largest was the twenty-five to thirty-four at sixteen point six. And then you also have the thirty-five to forty-four and then for me, I feel like that's people that have families, that's who um. And and this is my view of things with parks and records that. That's the age now we are trying to get people to move to West Liberty. Was that they're gonna spend the next twenty to forty fifty years.
Put the community for that.
It's baby on our school district. But we need to have things to support, support it. I was gonna say with Watsi, is are there um conservation potential there, it used to be a wetland.
So we've looked at reef, um but again, I mean for reef, it's it's always matching, so then you have to prioritize. Do we want to plant more, you know, indigenous um or, you know, filtration? Or do we wanna focus on activity, I mean, that's, that's where you have to divide, but um. But I have, we haven't taken a look at reef for a while, but but that's a tricky one to um reefs. They'll tell you that they're not really designated for trails, but a lot of the money that goes into trail systems comes from that reef. But they're more for yeah, that conserve conservation, the DNR and.
Jump to page forty-five where it's gonna get into existing stuff and kind of what the goals we uh. I had a little bit more say in this since. The first one, they're gonna go over done sports complex and. This can kind of maybe just like get, some of you might not even like. Where done sports co- complex came from to where it's at now, for the first eight years, it was non-existent, it was there. But we kind of need those again. Um I'm not gonna, it was is poorly built um when I took over nine years ago. Dedicated my time to getting, we raised some money, got hand fields fixed, spent money getting the turf. And where it needs to be instead of grass not growing and like you're in like sixty percent of the outfields um. And now that is used basically every night for something soccer, baseball, um softball, soccer, uh flag football. Anything that you can think of, people letting their dogs run. Which their signs. But um. It did have a batting pitch. We did add some pickleball courts, we do have ten to fourteen people that are just playing all the time now. Um that's.
Wait, so there are dedicated pickleball courts?
We turned the tennis court, we put a permanent set in and then. Then there was one day, that's someone asking if we had tennis players, I'm like, you know what, I maybe seen two people out there play tennis in my entire career. And that same day, there was two good other play.
I thought that was the Simon's courts.
No, they have their own. Got two tennis courts, but one of them has a pickleball uh permanent now on there.
The one is set up for tennis and the one is set up.
And then we have a temporary one that you can move. On the other side too, so um. But that's, you know, people want, then we need a dedicated courts, you know, lighting, things like that, I've been asked uh. So that's just another, you know, items on the list that people want. It's got skate park, um it's got small playgrounds, um the concession stand, bathrooms, it's where I kind of discussed that situation there. Um you had to see short term and midterm goals that are listed. I will tell you that, if you remember from budget session. I did not get, yeah, we did not pass the for the lighting I've done for the whole project. But a couple of weeks later, I was awarded eighty-five thousand from the Ryan Trust. Um and talked to Lee with it over and we're gonna find the extra twenty-five, thirty thousand that we need to at least complete. One at one, the last softball field that we really need to get um done right now.
For lighting?
Yep, for lighting, yep.
Eighty-five thousand?
We'll leave the soccer field will be the next lighting project that done at some points um. And that's not just for soccer, that's for multi-purpose things like football where we can change or we can. Play games on the weeknights instead of Sunday afternoon, uh cutting into family time and things like that, just have a little better time.
How do we, I wasn't aware of that, how how do we probably think the uh Ryan Trust for that?
Ah, I mean, we'll do a, we'll do a countdown, we, this is, this is, they funded, they helped fund the first one too. So um when we. Have a better understanding where I will need things moved around to, we can put a bench and things like that, so we'll be a plaque on it for sure, well, but um. There's still things changing that done for me, but pouring concrete, what we wanna do is, you know, we don't wanna take it out. But um you know, based on that thing I done, improvement bathrooms, we need more um. The biggest complaint is obviously the distance of where that is. And you know, the deal goes, what's in the middle, um but uh we, we didn't go that route. Walking trail I already talked about and then potentially someday, hopefully we get resurfaced that and not have gravel parking lots. You know, our police hate it because kids are out there just doing. You know, and it's, it's, you know, and then when it doesn't rain, everything, it's just covered in dust and all like this stuff um. And that was kind of part of the project when originally it was going to be paid.
I mean, because we typically don't allow for gravel parking lots, I mean, even in our city ordinance and yeah. So it really needs to be.
And you know, there's just no, it's a bill like, no one knows how to park. Busy night of soccer, like it's just everyone. I think there's a lot of things that we, we still have twenty acres to the north of Dutton. Moving fields from Watsi or getting rid of to there to 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 Dutton North. Then could open up possibilities of where the middle and more diamond epoxy for dog parks, green space, things like that. Um that kind of puts it in the motion of all the, the other things um. So that's just one of the main, that's one of the goals um but. Then you got a map of Dutton there on the other back page. Um then here's to move on to Friendship Park, I'm gonna tell you, most people didn't even know we had Friendship Park until it got redone. Um it's stuck in the neighborhoods down there, uh before that, there was nothing. I remember as a kid, I think I had a dome or something, I don't even know the slide, but. Um then I got one slide and some screen sets out there and. I don't remember the kid, like that's not the funnest stuff. We, we upgraded uh going on two years, all the two years. Uh had great positive reviews of people, you know, really enjoying, I got people that live outside of town that go to Friendship Park now. Uh they're not going to Kimberly Park all the time, they're going to Friendship Park. So it's kind of nice, they can get down there, they might need new kids that they might not see at school that are not their age and, you know, my daughter likes, I've been down there a couple of times. She'll run into a classmate that um we just might not see when we run into T C or anything out like, you know, our lives. But for her, it's a blast and. I know some other people have sent me Snapchats or videos of like, hey, we're down here, thanks for this, oh that's. Uh pretty proud that, you know, the city was able to find that, uh that was all on the city. For that project and, you know, at the time when the council approved it, I think they kind of understood that it uh some of that is needed to be done too. On, we also, then you just have the Hoover Nature Trail, um you all know that. We actually don't take, we don't take care of the nature trail, that's the Heritage Foundation, we get asked that all the time. I'm guessing at some, at some time it might get asked of us to do that, if we ever extend and do all that stuff, but. Um they do all the tree, anyone knows and the trees down, that's theirs.
They do a good job.
And they would have played so long there, but they are very, they're low, they're very dense because they're so.
Already done a lot of talking of that, but you know, it's like I've been upgraded, I discussed the pool there a little bit. Uh sidewalks have been upgraded, I would still like to add more to make things convenient for people to get to shelters and things like that. Um walking through wet grass and things like that, um no one likes to do. Just the accessibility for someone in a wheelchair, there's a lot of things that still need to be done. Uh permanent bathrooms, we've already, we've got a ton of uh permanent trash cans there, we still have to replace some at the shelters. Um and then we do need to at some point get into some lighting um throughout the park. Um along the um playground area. Things like that. And then six years, ten years from now. I got ideas of upgrading the shelters, you know, a veteran close shelter, uh where it may be open all year round. Um that thing is booked, a lot is like, we can ask ladies at city hall, they're always getting called us. Some people won't wait till last, you know, they, we had multiple, then we might build it, you know, and it's not a lot of money to bring in, but it's okay.
It's a nice thing, Bob.
Yep, and then there was uh community state that's been talked about too. Yeah, like music in the park and they had that concert from the chamber a couple of years ago, like a year ago, that state would have been nice. Instead of bringing it in, you know, and they brought in a trailer. So. Oak Ridge, we do take care of Oak Ridge Cemetery. It's under nineteen acres um. Fourteen hundreds. Oh, my guys love weeding around those.
There's still large amounts, um so like in your southeast division and like sections O and. All of those are still fairly open and a lot of our open area around, so when you drive in that memorial circle. A lot of those are open because those are flat stones, um our old portion of it is, it's pretty full. I mean, there's some openings, but most of that is full, so once you enter in and go past that first. Um street and you come down, a lot of that area is still open.
Yep, um we are, we budgeted for some money to have some pet stones that um need some maintenance. We're gonna have a company come in and fix those, we also have some storm damage from a tree falling um as well. Um you can cross off expanded cemetery to the north now because that is going to be how. And then parking is. Parking is always an issue down. Railroad Park um. One hundred and five, a little lecture on this because this is a major project that I'm. Putting in your ear now, because next budget, you can, we, this park needs to be upgraded. You had housing developments, the south of the tracks that has a ton of little kids and railroad park has. Put traffic now that it's not adequate. Because there are so many kids that wanna play there, they have nowhere else to go, unless walk all the way to. Because there are so many kids that wanna play there, they have nowhere else to go unless walk all the way to Kimberly. I am already working on plans, I'm working on a budget. I'm way ahead of the game for that and you have buildings going up there, right? I believe in the future. Um so you're gonna talk more. Um Mr. May, you lived across the street there, you probably got to see plenty of kids playing over there. The goal is. It's not Kimberly size, it's not Friendship size, it's in that middle area. Where we're kind of shooting for, uh so I am putting that area now that I would, I I am already working on on fundraising for grants. We have two that will hit that I have no problem, I know we would, we would get again. Um just like we did for Kimberly, um we, we hit every landmark, you know, that they're looking for.
I have a question about something. Is there any, a way you can open that for angle parts on the street or?
You'd have to give uh, you know. That's the, my concern when people had splash grab at Railroad Park, because there's no. We use the D, and this is, you know, we have other concerns of parking in Kimberly and stuff, you know, like we use the school. Like that's one of our issues is parking in parks. And we use Depot, the Depot is the parking for people right now, and that's what we're gonna have to use for side, you know.
I didn't know some of that right away could be used or who.
We do have an issue with some storm drains that are in there and I've already talked to Leo, I've basically gotta keep. Everything to the south, to the north of those storm drains. Of how they run. I think the cost of getting it moved and all that kind of stuff is not worth it. Um we can't manage. Um but you're right away, yes, you know.
There's a lot of blind areas.
The train on the other side, so it's. I mean, yeah, I think you spend a lot of time there.
I was putting right when I started like eighteen years. So just trying to remember that project for the future. I, I'm not gonna talk much about rendezvous and such, but taking a part there, very small, you guys know rendezvous gets uh music in the park. Lot of people go there for lunch, um. I will tell you the turf is a pain in my side, I cannot get grass to grow very well there because of so much shade. We've had some dog issues where people have basically just. So. We, we try our best there, um could there be some upgrades in the future? Yes.
The back part, the, I know the rotary is then.
That, that was a rotary project. That is theirs.
Okay, I'm not sure if that would be absorbed into city like meeting.
I don't know. They come to us every once in a while, they have them in eighteen years, that's where we got the West Liberty sign, they had a couple of other ones and they're like, hey. But then they took a couple of other ones over because they had a bigger group of people that wanted to volunteer up and take care of my stadium. It that is an issue when groups want to to do things like that and then they lose interest in taking care of it. Then they come to us or they don't come to anyone and it just gets overgrown, it becomes a problem with it. But yes, that is theirs, their project um. And Steve Hanson was great at taking care of that when he was here, you know, um but.
I don't know if they, I know that there were some issues with some of those breaks back there.
Oh, yeah, um.
The massive trip.
Then you have Veteran Park now goes. And then the last part I'm gonna talk about and I will be done with this is Lopsy Park. You guys should have noticed, we've added some upgrades to that already. And I talked earlier, I think a trail getting there, I've already been in talk of maybe redesigning the disco. With the guy that created it the first time, uh that might make some room for the trail along the creek. You know, it gets to that point. As said, if we could eliminate the middle and North Diamond at Lopsy, get those to Dutton. Um leave the South Diamond because it has a nice set of lights, it can, that area town still needs a little ball field for kids to just go play and still utilize it. But then that opens up to green space. If a dog park is in I, that area for a flooded area. I'm concerned with it, but I also can, you know.
It's like mess.
It's just a mess out there. Then you have just opened up some green space, things like that, so. Lopsy's idea of its park, I don't know how years it's established, but so. I am very proud of what we've done there so far. I'm still waiting on the lighting to be done, uh and that's driving crazy. Just the lighting. Lines got made like two weeks ago on everything.
Yeah, we.
It looks really nice, we just walked there last week.
Like people weren't there playing on it, so they were at softball.
We saw it in the area like three weeks ago and like midday afternoon. There was twenty kids playing basketball, playing volleyball now, there was a parent down with his little kid kicking into the soccer ball.
We have seen the difference here, there is less volleyball, so.
There, there's still a shelter back there?
We had, what was that, the one, it's probably been. Ten years ago, we had um someone that was doing their Eagle Scout, everything took on. That shelter, so I mean, one of them.
You know, why can't we cross over and connect the two that that.
We, we, we need to discuss that at some point when I can really get a trail. But I will tell you, when I first started there eighteen years ago, that was a project that was discussed and at the time. I remember a, a bridge was twenty five thousand dollars, so that didn't include. Install concrete pillars to sit on, that was the bridge alone. I don't know what's the size was or any of that, I was not part of that discussion. I just remember it from working in the parks department and hearing.
Recently, the Corps of Engineers, they, they have like. Numerous, I don't know if you remember Bill Coleman, I talked about this. Corps of Engineers and some of the railroads have bridges. Um that they have that they'll donate, but then it's on the city, they'll still do the peers. In order to set the bridge, but it's still, we'd say the cost of the, the actual bridge.
And the nature trail is maintained over there, like we know it, um it's. Because sometimes if a big tree comes down, we just reroute it. Yeah, you're not spending money to have a tree come, come out, like there's some big trees out there.
I've noticed you, you do mulch it, you mulch the.
We do a little bit, uh we use some of the old trees that are. I'm done with the Mars, Master Park Plan, if you have any questions, you can always come to me, um here, want to talk, um you know, parks and stuff, I'm always available. Uh I just want you guys to know that. I hope that the importance of parks and rec is bumping on your radar that the community wants, they want things. I will always tell them that's obvious, a lot of it's funding, I can't just get a million dollars. But if we're moving forward and making progress on those things and I think it would just, it would satisfy a lot of people. Even if you got, you know, I think once that trail person's done over there, you're gonna have that, my mom's gonna be excited, I know, because you've got somewhere to walk, you know. You know, run across one over there, but you know, it, it'd be a nice addition, I think it's just something that we keep, uh the momentum going. Alright, I'm gonna move on to proposals for feasibility study, if you remember a couple of months ago. When uh city manager, previous city manager was here, I totally bailed on you guys at the end of the meeting, I should have given my time to talk, but. We, we originally proposed like fifty or sixty thousand dollars and to backtrack on that a little bit. That was a company, a rough company that we're coming to talk to, and that also included getting potential. Information on a rec facility. You'll see these prices are a lot less than what we originally had. This will. But that's all they are. I'm gonna go over Waters Edge first. The price is thirty five thousand. And they have done, I don't know if you clicked on the links, that they recently just did Mount Vernon. Um study for them. They did Marion in two thousand and nineteen. Mariners use them twice now, from what I was told from uh at my uh. CPO class. They do their work there out of. You will see that the. And if you click on any of the links, you'll see they'll do some reading and put. They'll put a website together, it'll have the entire study, they'll, you know, they'll have their concept designs. Visual um for community members, all that thing, all that good stuff um. Heard good things, you know, from, from other, the people that use them, all their park directors, um they had no issues with them. Uh they are a little bit bigger company. You know, time wise, they say it's a thing they have. Ten to twelve month process, that's kind of what I've always been told, just pretty much assume a year over the study. So that was your.
And the way I understand it, we would be able to incorporate that information or go through a process of updating our comprehensive plan. That would be work that would be completed that we could um transition over into the comprehensive plan then.
Don't I know, I think there were the comments like, why do we need to do this study? And my first of all, like, we do road studies, we do other things because we wanna, we need to figure out what's wrong with the infrastructure. What could be fixed potentially, and then they also give us designs and rough costs of what's. Yes, we know, like, I'm telling you right now, you have to put, you have to put. Last season, this last four years.
Band-aids get expensive.
It is ninety three year. Concrete pool is a fifty year lifespan. What I've been told from our. The guy that would be, that I deal with a lot for pools, fifty years. So I think we've got our money's worth. But yes, just. When you fix a crack. That water has to find somewhere else, and that is where I'm worried is that we're going to find another issue. Any year, could be two, um we have a pump issue um. And there's, there's better systems out there.
We were to get a new pool, there, is there like guarantees and stuff, like ten year guarantee? Cause what I worry about is brand new second pool and then it breaks the next year.
Do you get a guarantee on your road when they pour concrete?
So they, so you have, you know, each facility has a number, whenever we update a utility or you do, you have a warranty. Of a period of time with the work that's done, although they'll say every time that they can't guarantee. You know, especially with things that are weather related, um how that's going to go, but. You have to think, you know, in ninety years, you can just about imagine, you know, even when you look at your. You know, your basement, for example, and, and how the soil shifts and changes and. And our seasons in Iowa with the frost levels and the expansions and the shrink and the expansion. So you can imagine after that period of time, you know, what that pool and how many times things have shifted and. I think at one time, I can't remember. When they were working on it, one time there was a large void because they didn't realize, yeah.
In the nine foot. He's been in the pool or it floats down to the nine foot. We've had a crack. So I had to battle that crack for. And I guarantee there is a.
Does that mean like a sink could be a sinkhole?
The weight of the pool with the water on it, you know. The water then lasts.
The new rivers that they were putting in south of towns. It's taking a little bit longer because they watch quick sand. Yeah, childhood nightmares unlocked.
Okay, we had a giant river. Yes, and broken. And then when we went to look at it, it was like an underground cavern, I mean, it's huge.
And then we're stacking the tubes in the, when the library was built, they had to rebuild a couple of the puddings because it was.
It's because of the sand, the sand and the clay mixture, because it was a marsh at one time, so different soil levels.
The next one, sorry, is one design. They will also work with, you have a couple of brochures from another company called uh. They combine together, um he works with, but these two guys work together, uh partner together in one design. I got two very good compliment, like. They're a good company, they're a smaller company, they do really good work. Um and they are at twenty thousand dollars.
And you were a lot faster.
So uh but you will see that um there are, you know. They might not bring everything to the table that Waters Edge would, um as a bigger company, a smaller company. They, I believe they just got to Bellevue. From that town, I mean, did real research on that. Basically, what we're gonna get from either company is them to come to our facility, look everything over. Give us the bad news, tell us what the cost would be maybe to the, to, for any renovations. Then they'll come up with a new. New aquatic center. What, what do we want? They're gonna give us different ideas. Maybe give us three, five different concepts. One might have everything, all the bells and whistles, the other one is just. A little splash feature and, you know, a slide and a pool. Your prices. Gonna be similar.
Well, they're in our, I guess, zone. So they know what our weather is like.
Keep in mind, I mean, these are projects um that can be bonded um with TIP. Um local option sales tax, so you know, we, you have, you know, different. You know, funding opportunity, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent cash. We can certainly look at bond and then use TIP dollars for that project. Um also for local option sales tax dollars. And then we can, you know, grant match those funds too, so.
I was probably quoted maybe two or three years ago, then you had five years. You have. I'm being generous. It already, this last week and a half was. Can we keep banding? Uh I, I do think there's a better amount of thing out there than what we do, I think people would be very excited about this. But basically, I, for my view is that if this could put into motion. I'd say five years, it's like it's gonna take because you're gonna have a year roughly for just this. Then you got engineering plans, you gotta get in company, you know, then we go to bids. Are we gonna keep that same location?
And then it gives you time for your budget, your, your capital improvement plan. Um and then bonding, of course, takes time and TIP and things like that, so. Um, and then bonding, of course, takes time and stuff and things like that, so. But it's doable.
Yeah, I have a question, so this Waters Edge one, what's. Say it was like thirty-five thousand for all the stuff. This architecture guy runs is around twenty thousand here, but doesn't include, is there anything included in this one that is not included?
This is what the, this is basically the specs that I gave them.
Yeah.
And that's what he. Put out to him, and same with, you know, basically, then I just copy it basically. And I, oh god, to be honest, I think I copied him.
This also includes public gathering sessions.
Yeah, and then, then we want, I think both, I think even both of them, I'd say we need more. You know, there'll be additional, if you have more, I mean, and put the, I know one for sure, I'll talk, yeah. Waters Edge just have one listed in there, uh, for sure, um. Right. Add the information.
Great question, why do we do that otherwise? That's one thousand.
So if you remember correctly, well, first of all, we had, Nick had asked to leverage um. The American Rescue Dollars that remained. Um, and then it would be a budget amendment, um, probably after the first of the year, um, because we were, were. In a window where we, we don't have time to make that budget, I mean, we could, but we're not giving our community members enough time. If they don't agree with our budget amendment to be able to. Um, request a. A hearing on it, so. You're supposed to have it, you're supposed to have your budget amendments done, um, no later than the first of June. Because you're, you're to allow your community members enough time if they don't agree. Um, with your budget amendments or your budget, you have, they have enough time to.
When you said the first of the year, you mean fiscal year. I got it.
Yeah, July one, after July one of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so. Potentially, then those are hundred dollars.
I wanna say one thing, and obviously, it's gonna be a first for us all to ever to do. I've seen projects that we've run, there've been a lot of change orders. We might ask for, I might transfer a little bit more. Do you hover anything that we do want actually?
Yeah, right.
Yes, I would just think I have seen a lot of change orders, I've seen council members getting very upset about change orders.
I mean, you can make it in their, in your resolution, you could put a maximum. You know, based on the numbers that are before you, you could put, you can ask for. A maximum number on there, so in cases they're moving along. And, you know, we decide that we want something more in communications or. Or, or if we have questions that we want them to look into a little bit more, that you're building a contingency there, you, just to give it a little more room, yeah.
Before I leave, I'm gonna just, one thing, and I talked to Lee about this before and previously, here is that. We have a parking issue at Kimberley. The ELC building. Potentially could be for sale at some point. We, we don't need a bill, we need. We don't have part. And we would have more area work. Um, just, I don't think anyone even, you guys even know that stuff yet, but that's not our parking lot. At the schools.
Yeah.
Why are they gonna give us the discount, knowing that it's so much?
But, you know, I don't know. Dave and I talked to them before that they would come to us when they're ready for that, um, but, you know, it becomes a building that's. I mean, they're probably random.
It's certainly a project that could qualify for a catalyst or, you know, again, continuing down. Working with the economic development, I mean, it, it's a building that could be a remediate, remediation. A catalyst, you know, I mean, even if, even if was a situation to make a parking lot and maybe. You know, potentially bathrooms or something, or storm shelter with those bathrooms. Um, there's some options that could be there with that land, so.
Yes, no, I'm not asking. We're gonna have that option. I see a lot of pros to it, I. That's, that's part of the one company, that was, this, I actually only sent. You were on that document. I forgot to send you the quotes from the one, from one side, that was just their documentation for, like, for you to look over for their company. Yeah, so there you have, you have documentation.
Let's call the meetings order. It's seven thirty-six. The regular city council meeting of Westbury, Iowa, the council members, president and I are. Mayor George Timm, Karen McFerrin. And city council member, Santa Dominguez, Apple, Josh Shields, and Omar Martinez. I will ask for an approval of the agenda. Moved in second to approve the agenda, all of whom, please say aye. All opposed, say no, the motion varies. And we'll move directly to oath of office for our new police officer, Don Strong. Yeah, right here again, if you don't mind, sorry, Josh. I, I want, I would like to your right. Right, that'll be, that'll be right. Yeah, well, we're glad you're, you're here in town. If you just raise your right hand and, uh, short. I, Don Strong, do solemnly swear.
I, Don Strong, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as police officer.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
For the city of Westbury, Iowa.
For the city of Westbury, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
We'll move to item four, approval of the consent agenda, there are motion to approve.
Motion.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda, including the city council meeting minutes. Uh, from our last meeting and the April viewer report, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of whom, please say aye. All opposed, we know, most carried by the zero. And five, your liquor license for Liberty Public House, on the city of twelve months, but the class C retail alcohol license, is there a motion to approve? Moved in second to approve the liquor license, is there any discussion, chief, uh, in you? And I rest that, there have been zero issues, so there's a lot of, there's been zero calls for missing. So. Any questions to discuss them? This is a consent code, I mean. Uh, there's, I have any questions, second, all of the favors, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, most carried by the zero. We have, uh, reports. Hope everybody has a chance to, uh, watch through the reports, are there any questions from council members regarding mining agrees?
Yeah. Mine was, uh, mine was on the city manager's report about the part in the third part, um, to be discussed. They're entering, I've been looking to annexations, what is that? Well, I know what that means, so like, what, are we looking at doing that in a study, or what does that mean in saying?
Yep, so, um, I had a, um. A developer contacted us and they, um, requested to consider annexation. And so along with that, there was some more questions that the developer had pertaining to the annexation. So it was just some work and some time put in on those questions. Um, that's just the thing to a new developer.
Okay, cool, yep. And the developer was requesting annexation or had just had questions.
The developer is, um, requesting annexation, but there was some additional steps that needed to be done before you could move to a. Um, meeting with planning and zoning on annexation.
And by the way, I'm not sick, I've started a new medication that makes me cough, no, I promise I'm not.
Um, I just wanted to say, I really appreciated having the University of Iowa with that. College of Social Work, our report. And, um, we did, came out of a work session where we had discussed the parks, park and rec master plan and. That report correlated, you know, right on with. So, as far as our community statistics, yes, very young. Yes, we have, we have like a, like a weird. Narrow, wide, narrow shape into our community demographic figures and. Um, which I remember twenty years ago, it was like an hour, I think, because we had a disproportionate amount of. Older population as well as very young. And now that has switched because we've got a lot of young families to this community, with all. That are staying, moving, staying, commuting, and, uh, here's their children, so. We think our, you know, we're seeing this change and more. So it's really, uh, really quite eye opening, yeah.
Hi, Ali, have you gotten a decent response from the December reading buddy requesting, is that? They're having a meeting about that coming up on, um, either Monday or Tuesday.
I heard announced in the high school, I was hard to be announced, but I don't, I didn't know if that is.
Okay. Who've been coming in and asking about it, I know we've been, I'm taking people asking about silverware hours.
Okay, good.
Um, so I'm assuming that this, as long as it's happening here where we can see it happening, like sign up on it, we're happy to do this for silverware hours.
Okay.
Yes, I think at this point, it is making sure to get, um, parents of younger children involved, so that they have people to reach to.
Yeah.
Um, or you read. And then I can believe we also have, um, this, uh, Miss Ed knows his dogs will also be here at some point to be read to.
Other questions by city council?
Um, do we know yet, um, what the issue is with number four? Or is that not, I don't have it as northway not come yet to do an evaluation? Um, Danny, Danny's report has worked on issues with well number four not running comfortably, they will be here in the morning.
I, he was gonna, Danny was gonna try to be on, based on what I understand is that. Um, they had a issue with the pump. And that the pump, it's the same pump that we had. On our existing, yeah, okay, so it's not coral, it's not a part of the project, it's, um, our existing pump.
Oh, okay.
Um, that they've had issues with before, right, yeah.
That one's, that one we've been using, right?
You're using two of your well.
Yeah, right.
That was.
One and yes.
One and four.
Four, right, right, that's what kind of drive me a little bit to think was.
We're, we're working on two.
Yes.
And, and that's because, one of the reasons was in case something would happen.
To one of those.
It's not a pump, something that they couldn't fix for a while, then you'd have a.
Okay.
It says on the next day, I noticed that it's now operating, it should be, apparently, they were able to resolve it. I do have a question, historic question about Westbury, whatever happened to number one.
So, so I believe.
We have two, three and four.
We have two, three and four, right. I should know, but I can't come up with it right now. Typically. Typically, the wells, after a certain amount of time, they no longer function the way they want. And they, they cap it, but I don't know if that one was capped, because I don't know where it would be capped, I don't know where it is.
There are naming conventions for wells, or your next one would be five.
Usually, yes.
I will, I will double check the fact on this, but I do know when we were, um, doing the transformer upgrade. At that time, when they were digging around the electric or from the powerhouse. Um, it was my understanding they had found remnants of. Uh, another building, and so, but I'll check on that fact, but.
Need to take any time on it, curious.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Westbury, trivia, other questions, right, council?
It was on the other meeting, so their reports are separated into different meetings, and we got on the last.
So, um, just again with the water, um, we had. A, um, a significant water leak that had, and I did announce this on last Friday, but we made Daniel meeting, but. Um, there had been a significant leak, um. I gotta remember what I got this again.
On, on the corner of six, that new number.
Yes. And that had gone on for over a year, and so, um, Danny was able to get that. Uh, completed, um, just in this last week. I do know that the hydrant needed an additional. Um, parts that they were going to, uh, do that, work on that as well that was there. And so I'll follow up with Danny as well on the, on the hydro, but, um. That had, and we appreciate because the residents of that corner had put up with. Um, water leaks and causing mud and causing problems on that corner for almost a year. And we certainly do apologize for that inconvenience and, um. And appreciate her staying diligent on it, um, so that we were able to get it fixed and. We'll continue to follow up to make sure everything's holding as it should, so.
I'm gonna have a more question, is there a police report in this? Oh my god, it's just.
So we do, we didn't have to supervise this on one and half on the other, so it was all.
Great, cool, I was just, I thought they did this.
In turn, Clark, let's work on that, maybe, I, I had that first, that question too, a while back when we first, when I got, got, got involved. Running a meeting, maybe, I think we might be able to list them out more clearly so we can see which.
Yeah, we can do that, that was a decision on the city manager's part to separate. Yeah, we can do that. That was a decision on the city manager's part to separate them so that they weren't all in one grouping. Um, but that's definitely something that I can work to put on the agenda for you so that you know who you're looking for on each of your items.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
That's great. Good question.
I, I noticed on the state committee report that, um, Brittany, you discussed, uh, we received information at the IMWCA university conference and the large focus was on mental health and the workplace.
Yes.
So is that something that is gaining momentum that they're, that they are starting to maybe look into implementing programs or?
Um, the, the big draw right now is on education, especially with the pandemic. Statistically speaking, for the state of Iowa, you are more likely to lose a coworker to suicide than any other form of death. Um, the, um, rates for anxiety and depression are three, an average three times higher statewide than they were in twenty nineteen. And then on top of that, especially for age, um, ages nineteen to almost thirty. Um, fifty to sixty percent of the people they surveyed, um, have life affecting levels of depression and anxiety that they are dealing with on the daily. And then for Iowa liquor sales, um, have had record highs for the last five years straight. They're one of the only industries in Iowa that were not negatively affected by the pandemic. It was actually the exact opposite. So those are their really, really big pointers, um, especially for middle aged women. Alcohol deaths have doubled. A lot of the education was on, um, being present, um, their big tagline was, um, try and take, um, five minutes that you don't have to check on someone else. And if anybody, if everybody can do that, it'll help.
City manager, anyone wants to share anything about this? From that, I mean, nothing there is, we could, want to get an opportunity for something.
Uh, the only thing I did not have in my report is, um, attending the, um, we lead annual meeting last Friday. Um, Ken Brooks presented the, and the board presented a very nice annual meeting, very informative, a great group of speakers, including our mayor. And, uh, thank you council member Dominguez for attending. I think there was a lot of good things shared for that meeting.
Yeah. Both agree. Meeting meetings. We need to, just have it all for now.
Um, I just, in my report, I sent out some emails today, just trying to find time for us to, we have public safety. Um, we have some discussions over signage and then, um, I did get, um, some follow up on the employee uh, policy meeting to address, uh, city administration, uh, as a priority first. And so we're gonna try to get a Zoom meeting set, um, with one of our, and have another community member in house so we can go through that information.
Right. We have a entire task force meeting on Monday as well. It's coming up.
Hey, okay, a couple of things. We talked about wells, but well number two, Northway is providing us contracts and last meeting, they were approved. So we still have contracts, bonds, insurance, that should become the method. And after that, we'll have a pre town and get them out. So that's, that's on that side of it. We'll talk about the phase two part of that project later in meeting. And then Rainbow and Maxon is still going pretty well. Um, not many real issues. Sometimes I wish they'd work a little longer, but they seem to work for about three days and take, they're, they're like a lot of companies, they're very busy. They've got lots of work. They're still moving forward, staying on schedule. Um, Columbus Street, um, sidewalk, we have given that to them, we've given them plans. They've actually already incorporated the cut that needs to go into rainbow format for that, if it gets approved. And, um, they have not given us cost back yet. So we'll be coming back to you hopefully at the next meeting with a cost on that.
I did notice the curb cut out, so I. That's good, that's good.
They, they think it's coming, right? Whether they do it or somebody else, we thought they better have a cut, we wanted to make that cut.
Yeah.
We also have made, made cuts on the other side of the road when that gets done for the, um, the subdivision. And we've been back and forth with their engineer a number of times on making sure that's exactly where they want it and then there's a trail, so they're gonna have to go over the trail and then who does what, you know, um, when, when we get there. I think we've got that all worked out, how we did the jointing, the time to them, so I think that, that's coordinated. So that, that's really how I have.
Oh, good. Did I miss anything about reports?
I have a good question, hopefully really quick, I'm sorry, but. So when a developer comes in and proposes like this, what the subdivision's gonna look like and things to the city, does the council ever see that? Did I ever see that?
So it was, it was the council prior to.
Okay, yeah. I, I suppose I can say, I was, I don't want something to happen like the short street thing, you know? So I'm glad that another council will look like that.
So it, it originally, but there's still, there's still some items that'll be coming back to the council.
Oh.
Um, as we continue to work through development agreements with the urban renewal. Um, there were some, I think this council asked for some pictures and I thought we had provided them in one of our packets when we were working on the public hearing, but I can go back and, and pull that information, um, that was shared as to what those, what those houses will look like or uh, based on what the design is.
I missed a couple meetings.
So this, this one project has been, this, this project started in twenty twenty. And so, yeah, so it's been, um, before council and, and the urban renewal was before council and then we had some amendments to the urban renewal and, and so there'll be some more things that'll be coming, uh, before council with that development.
I think you'd like to see it if there's any substantive change in.
Like, whoa, how an ambulance gonna fit through there or like just like a second set of eyes, you know?
Yeah, so those things we review, um, they've gone through, um, many different, um, levels as far as, um, early on, B. Strinkham looked at the drainage, um, there's a whole list of items, but you're always welcome to come in if you wanna look in. Uh, we have a huge packet from start to current as to what the development and the size. Cause they do, um, they had to measure the street, you know, based on design standards. Um, again, our engineers go through those specifics with the developer to make sure that they meet design standards, suit us, um, yeah.
And so like with the new bicycle development by the cemetery, that's going through the same process.
So Acres is a, it went through on a smaller scale, um.
Oh, with the acres, I'm sorry.
Yep, Brad Acres has the Meadow and yes, and it's a, it's a smaller, I, I don't wanna take anything away from his investment. Um, it's just, it's a different type of development.
Yeah.
And so, but it also, um, we provided that through, um, those plans are approved through planning and zoning and, yeah. So, and though there's some more discussion to be had on that one.
I'm hopeful of seeing the layout for that. So, have you?
So on that one, the reason is that one actually doesn't go to planning and zoning, it goes to board of adjustments. And the reason of that is because he could have put it for like big apartment complexes on there based on how it was zoned. He actually brought it to have a special exception to allow single family homes in that section. So that one doesn't go to planning and zoning, it doesn't change the zoning of it, it's a special exception for that property, so it's. Yeah, correct. Yep, so that one is handled a little bit differently. It's not handled the same way that the one is that's going out on the rainbow section.
So in that case, does it not come before council perfectly because of the way it's?
Yeah.
Isn't that one the? It's a hit water from you, there's a meteoric thing.
That's what I was just.
So, yeah, it's a different type of project that's happening on that one.
We did write a letter and try and edit out the fact of not, not to leave it as a former city manager.
Yeah.
Would council like to see those to be in the loop and have an eye on?
I, I would like to, but I don't wanna make extra work for you guys if it's not typically something that we need, just need.
Great. Are you guys wanting to see like the layout of it? Are you wanting to see what the homes look like? What exactly are you guys wanting? Cause there's multiple different things that go into it, because if you're looking at the plans, you're just gonna see this little square with modular homes are going. If you wanna see what it looks like.
The, the concept design, you know what I mean? Like if there's, there's those things, right? Like this is what it might look like, like they're gonna.
Yeah, I have pictures of what the homes will look like. Um, there's multiple different styles, yep. So on those ones, I do have that for the GHS one, I have only have like the layout of the map. I don't know what the home portion of it will look like. They brought in different sections of what they could possibly look like when they originally did it, but I haven't got anything updated since then.
I think it's a great idea for council to be in the loop of what it's gonna, what is going in, where it is, how it can look like, where are the sidewalks connecting, uh?
And like people in town wanna know, like, what is it gonna look like? We have a general idea.
Good for you enough. That's, uh, probably.
Okay, any other questions from council? Great, we'll move on to item seven. Public hearing on the road plan specifications and proposed form of contract for the well number two improvement stage two project for the Middle East and West Liberty. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Moved and cited the ultimate public hearing. Any comments or discussion? Uh, could roll call vote, council member McFerrin.
Yes.
Council member Dominguez.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Martinez. The motion passes in the public hearing, so it's open. Other public comments in the room regarding this, uh, plan specification? Do you wanna talk about this anymore at all?
Yeah, that's a good dynamic, I like. Sure. Um, this is one that we, um, it, it's, it's basically the building improvement. So the D, the DNR, when we went to get approval to use that well, they said they'd like to see it, they have a room around it so it was more like a well housing room inside the powerhouse. So this contract, the first contract was basically for a well builder. This contract is more for like almost a construction. The problem is it's small. So you're talking about a driveway, concrete, masonry, we're knocking out a wall to put a big door in so we can get things in and out. Then interior framing, blocking some things up, electrical. So there's a lot of little pieces. We estimated it at fifty-five thousand, it came in, low bidder came in at seventy-four nine, which is quite a bit higher. But I think primarily because of everybody that does that work with business. Um, SG construction was a low bidder. They did part of city hall, they've done a lot of different, these kind of projects all around the state. They want to, they told me the only reason they bid it is they want to be a contractor that bids to the city of Westwood, so they, they did that, that reason. So I, I think they're a good bidder and we can get to that later. Um, the project, I think will be a very good project for, for, for the city, if it goes forward.
I have a question for you, Vanessa. Um, and this kind of was asked earlier in our session about, uh, warranties. But I noticed in reading the notes, underlying, I can find that it's the general contractor shall submit a written guarantee for their materials and workmanship for one year from the date of final acceptance of owner. So does that mean that they, this, the all the construction and the bill for this is guaranteed for one year?
After you accept it. Yes, but, but, but this question comes up a lot. If you have a part, let's just say you, you bought a door from Pella. And the door has a twenty year thing. Is it only good for one year? And the answer is no. Any of the supplier guarantees override if they're longer, whichever is longer. Alright, but you have a year on workmanship. So if, um, something comes up and all of a sudden a window won't open and it was some kind of a workmanship, they have to come back and fix it.
And that's a year, um, after it's done.
After you accept it.
Right, as being done.
Done. You accept it and you, you, we walk around and say, it looks like it's all working good, we're good to go. Then you have a year.
Leo, I have a question. He said that the DNR would like to see this done. How, how mandatory is would like?
Yeah, that's.
We don't do that.
So they basically said you need to put a room around it.
Oh.
They didn't really say exactly. Big, how, for instance, we're gonna have offices for the, um, electric utility kind of right out outside the room. Will they accept that? We believe so. They haven't yet, but we believe so. We haven't got that permit nailed yet, but it's close.
Just like, like, is this something that we can put off for a year?
Not really, no. They, if you don't do anything, they're gonna reject, no question. What, what we showed in the well, they, and by the way, the DNR doesn't look at these plans.
Okay.
They look at the well plans. And what we did is we just showed the walls around it and we showed a new opening coming in. And we said, well, and then it shows another door with my kids' office over here. And we just show doors going there and there and we, you can close those doors. But to me, we met exactly, that's kind of what I meant. We met the intent of what they asked us to do. We hope that.
So the, the offices are that are here on this plan are existing or they're a part of this?
They're existing.
That's what I thought. So they're just enclosing the area basically to kind of include the routes that are.
But there's doors on those offices.
Right, right, yeah. Good questions, other questions? Other comments? Okay, um, does city hall receive any public comments or quick comments?
I'm a strong.
Motion for the public hearing?
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded before the public hearing. Any further discussion? The roll call vote, hold on, uh, council member McFerrin.
Yes.
Council member Dominguez.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Martinez. The motion passes and the hearing is closed. Item seven B, a resolution to approve plans and specifications for well number two, phase two, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve, then, then we've already discussed it. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, I'm gonna go backwards. Council member Martinez.
Yep.
Council member Phil.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Dominguez.
Yeah.
Council member McFerrin.
Yes.
Resolution passed, it's five to be read. Item eight has been adopted claims. Number one, an amount of seven hundred thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents to their motion for proof.
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Vote, what, 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 what?
I think that's the one that Nick just talked about.
It, they'll be back on there. Um, we are in the process of training a new employee on that portion, did not print out. It, it is on the main screen, it's just the margins are not all the way out, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Uh, the vendor budget claims is number one is approved. Five to zero. Vendor budget claims is number two, the amount of thirty dollars is also on our list. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Moving seconded to approve. Uh, any further discussion?
Is that at Watsby? I think I saw it. I know. Saw it.
Moved and seconded to approve, vendor budget claims is number two, and the amount of thirty dollars. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Aye, saying.
Motion carries four to zero one, abstention by council member McFerrin. Public comments and correspondence. If anyone in the room, if they put a comment or correspondence. It works, we lead one nineteen, it's third street. I just wanted to formally thank everybody that was able to attend the quarterly business meeting on Friday. Let's thank the mayor specifically for his excellent speech that he gave for the, the state and city, that he was able to do that and even invite the mayor to do it again. In corresponding meeting next year. Uh, as part of that meeting, we provided, we lead. Uh, as part of that meeting, we provided Wheelie's annual report to everybody in attendance. Including some members of city administration and city council. Uh, but I will also provide a digital copy of that to the city clerk and ask that be entered into the record perhaps next city council. So, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much for the uh. Offering that forum. For us, it was a very. Informative meeting. I enjoyed it, hearing from 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 everybody, and uh, yeah, special thanks for offering that forum for uh. We're gonna give a state of the city address, was. Um, it's fun, I understand that that's the first time that that. That such an address was given since the nineteen seventies. So, um, that was good. Has city hall received any public comments or correspondence?
I know, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, there's not enough to see them.
Uh, city council, Councilmember Schultz, public comment, public comment?
If you have one thing to talk about, that you think I'll. If you guys can remind me, I'll talk to. Afterwards, it's not a public comment. The city utility question, I don't think we need to spend time on it here.
Okay. Councilmember McFerrin?
My feelings, I received one things from uh. A consultant, they're doing a tech startup project in words. So we're doing a thing on June ninth. Either nine or ten to eleven June, pretty much everyone wants to start a business, or even visit. Or wanna like. You must share ideas about the words. Who would start up, um, just to be about people there. It's twenty-five dollars, include breakfast, lunch, and dinner, three days. Um, type of merge, that was the one behind the library. A lot of people that wanna attend, I'll forward Brittany, the suppliers, I mean, to go out. Interesting to go. Why should we go to the grand farm and help you go?
Okay. Excellent. We're clicking on, and you guys.
Um, just a quick reminder, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief, would you remind us, uh, we have that uh meeting coming up with. Uh, Muscatine County, you know, Chris Jasper, if you would, would you mind? Providing that?
Um, it's May thirtieth, I'm gonna watch this one, that's on a good Monday. So, May thirtieth, at six thirty P M, at our um. Community center, and Chris Jasper's hosting, it's gonna be a town hall open forum about emergency preparedness and severe weather. Um, and he's also gonna include some information about the nine-one-one service for the county. He's also uh got a line on the person for the National Weather Service, who is the warning coordinator. So that's the person who said, yes, we're gonna put out these warnings, so um, it's gonna be a good U A session, and it's open to. The public, so anybody in our county that wants to come in, it's gonna be a good information session. So the thirtieth, six thirty P M, I think it's. That's good, something that has a lot of meaning, uh, if you did the. That brings you there, you're.
Thank you.
Anything else? That I missed, uh? City manager Gertz?
Yeah.
Or anyone?
Um, nothing more.
Okay, great, we'll move on to new business, ten A, discussion of appropriate follow-up on city hall staffing hours. City hall would like to adjust the hours, that's that uh, that they are open, and I'll just ask for a motion to approve this. Proposal.
Second.
Moving seconded to uh.
Sorry. We're kidding, I think that was I'm on it.
Okay, uh, intercity third, over, you wanna? Tell us what you're looking at.
Yeah, I sure can, okay. So, city staff has gone through some changes, um, we've tried multiple different hours. Trying to meet needs of the community members. And in the last. Year, um, that timeframe, that end timeframe where we expanded those hours originally, we were open until six, and then we were open until five. We just don't have the foot traffic, so what people are typically doing when they're coming to pay their bill, they're coming. To city hall and then they're going over to Liberty Communications. But Liberty Communications closing at four P M, we just don't have that traffic, so that timeframe is very. Minimal people coming in, we have maybe ten customers in the entire week. Um, but what I have noticed is that we have multiple phone calls over our lunch hour. So what we would like to do is go back to eight to four thirty. Keep the office open during that lunch hour, stagger the lunches, so that we can have somebody available for all those times that people are calling in. And not have that downtime at the end of the day. Um, the other thing that we are looking at as well. Typically, our slowest days are Wednesdays in the office, um. City manager Gertz with their last Wednesday while I was out in the nuisance training, and they only had two people the entire day. So what I would like to propose is to be able to close at one P M, we have a lot of training that needs to happen. We would have dedicated time to go through that training while we go through this transition. Um, and that would also allow us to have our meetings and stuff that we need to catch up on, just in the office itself. Um, so right now, that's kind of what we're looking at, um, for the proposed plan, I think. There's a couple of different things that you guys can look at, and I have it down on the action form for you, um. We could do a trial period, see how this works, we can approve both uh eight to four thirty. And also the closure at one P M on Wednesdays for that additional training. See how it goes, test it out, it can come back to council, and then we can give you the updates on that. That would be my recommendation, just based on where we are right now with all the training that needs to happen. Um, the other thing is, is we could approve just the eight to four thirty, not do the closure at one P M Wednesdays. Or the other thing we could do is have no action and not change anything at this time.
Thoughts?
I think it makes sense, um, I think you probably know better than anybody what foot traffic is like, so I would trust the city's opinion. I think six months is a long time for trial period, I wonder if it could be three months? And then talk about it then, um, especially, my only, my biggest concern would be like. People who work in Iowa City or Muscatine, and they don't get that done with their job until like five, and then they can't get back here until five thirty, but this, you know, office is closed. Um, but if that's not an issue within an extra month, then it probably won't be an issue here, so maybe we could just do that. I can take that. So, I can take, um, so, just. Councilmember Smith, what we do, um, we do some case by case situations, so if we're. We have communication with an individual that um needs to make time at city hall, and it may be during, even after five o'clock. Um, on occasion, um, one of us will take that, so we can make an appointment to meet with them, and. Um, so we do try to, but we do have very limited case by case situations, um. Yeah, and and again, gearing up. I think it'll be a good read too, because um, once we're able to uh bring on the new encode. Um, where we're able to allow access um through the internet or through the website. So they can look at bills and and look at billing history. I would almost think that that. I don't wanna jinx it, but it could, you know, even slower foot traffic down even more, but yeah, just trying to measure that and.
And with our credit cards, our credit cards have increased significantly, people paying online, and then we also have our drop boxes that people can utilize during that time. As well.
The only thing I would say is, and you might have already done this, Cherry, but it's just to make sure there's no like state. State statute, the government, city hall has to be open between this this hour and this hour.
Yeah, there is, there is not, um, we just have to be able to accept payments, which during that time, we will still be in the office, we can still check those drop boxes. We will still process those credit card payments, it would be more so closing that front door for the foot traffic coming in. And since those are our slowest days, it just allows us time to be able to focus on training. With the upgrade to encode ten, we're gonna have multiple times where we're gonna need to be training as well, and that's kind of. Um, why I had put the six months originally is in case we have about a twelve-month window that they're looking at to upgrade us. And so I was hoping that during that time, that encode training would come as well, but I'm perfectly fine going with the three months as well.
Other thoughts, council?
Apparently, there's a few days occasionally where. You know, city hall announces that it'll be closed for trainings and meetings, so with the option of closing early on Wednesday, Wednesday, is that'll effectively. Replace that from happening going further, that all that dedicated time will be set for that.
Right, yeah, that is the plan, because then at that point in time, we can have those meetings that we, or those trainings that need to happen. That would happen during those days, so we would specify, like specifically use Wednesdays as those training days.
Oh, makes sense. So there are consensus. To approve option one. Go ahead and change the hours and um, including the Wednesday change, but to do it for a three-month trial period. There's a consensus, we have a motion and a second to approve your proposal.
Just a consent vote is fine.
We just have a consent vote on the motion that's on the table, that work.
Yep, and we are gonna do option one, but change six months to three months, correct?
Yeah, and I'm thinking it's just, let's check in in three months, so that we're even very, very active, just be going.
Okay, yep, and I will bring information back to you guys, um. Once I start doing reports and stuff like that, I will put all of that information in there for you guys, so that you are able to see. Everything that is happening, the things that are being accomplished during that time, meetings that are being held, and trainings that are being held as well.
Good, excellent, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve this, putting that option one, changing six months to three months. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries five to zero. Item ten B, discussion and appropriate action to secure rental fortifying and handout stations for the rag try event, July twenty-nine. Twenty twenty-three, we have a couple of options here as well, there are motion to approve this proposal. Again, moved and seconded.
So, um, as you can see on the action form, I provided you um, a little bit of history. Previously, what the city, what the cost of the city was in two thousand eighteen. Um, to what, we received two quotes, um. Yeah, they've gone up um a little bit um since two thousand eighteen, I I really tend to believe it's because. Of such a large event, um, and the need for these um as well. Uh, but my recommendation would be um with outhouse sanitation, um. They're willing to. Based on the numbers, they were, they threw in a fifteen percent discount, um. And we had worked with them before, um, I think they helped subsidize some of ours in two thousand eighteen, because we we work with. We couldn't get enough, so we had to go with another contractor to bring in more, so. Um, and it will impact the budget, um, we'll have to have a budget amendment. And with this being a, an economic. Uh, development type of an event with tourism, um, we can utilize utility. Uh, funding, um, to help offset versus it hitting the general fund a hundred percent. I do not see that we have much of an option. Uh, because we do need restrooms, and we need a number of restrooms, and. Again, I mean, that's the market, um, at a hundred and ten each. Um, and like I said, in two thousand eighteen, we were looking at sixty-seven dollars, and I'm sure with. Fuel costs, chemical costs, paper costs, employee costs. You know. That goes right along with the percentage that we've seen increasing.
Yeah.
In that period of time, so.
Questions by council or?
Um, I think that basically it's supposed to be a much bigger crowd than the last time we had it, but this is seventy-five is still more than double what we had before. I mean, would it be reasonable to plan for fifty, and you know, like, yes, we can lay up the same line, but. Sort of, I don't know, I just think that seventy-five is a lot, and the first stop on their on their route, right? And, um, would it be less of a budget impact, I mean, we would say it was, it wasn't obviously, if we uh did wait until thirty-five.
I would have to.
Does that, um, seventy-five number?
That's based on the, so that's based on the um attendance factor. Um, the recommended amount actually was, is probably even a little bit higher.
Twenty thousand people.
Yeah, I cut it back a little bit more to seventy-five, I mean. What was they saying, a hundred and twenty-five porta potties, if not more?
I believe Coralville's going to have over two hundred. Um.
So seventy-five was a lot lower than their record, well, I don't know, we're not equal, no.
They're overnight, right?
Mm-hmm. Um, the big thing with RagBri is, because it's the fiftieth anniversary, they did not cap registration at all. Um, so they had already hit their registration. Numbers from previous years, like, two weeks in.
Maybe they're really hopeful, uh, what if it's.
Uh, okay, no, it's, it's big.
Confirmed that it's gonna be like.
There was thirty last.
Yeah, that's what it says. And we didn't have enough, we didn't have enough, it was, it was, it was a mess.
There was crap everywhere.
It's messy, no, it was messy. Yeah, it was messy, it was a lesson we learned that we should have, and in our, we should have had more. Um, we were scrambling at the last minute to try to get, we we managed to get about. That wasn't what we originally had ordered, I think we originally ordered half of that, and we scrambled it the last couple of weeks. Um, and that's where the, that company had come in and helped us out, um. Cause we didn't plan for nothing, and then we still didn't have enough. Yeah, um, I mean, it, yeah, I mean, I can go, I mean. I remember I, what both of them have told me is that. I mean, again, that number's based on that amount, so I don't know if I reduce it, if it's gonna change what their quote is. Um, the other thing is, is that, um. I have to let them know now, because if they're gonna be spoken for, so it kind of puts you in a. Kind of a tough position. I'm inclined to just be mad.
Alright, so we're looking at option one, approval of the the lower quote. Um, not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, budget for, for deposit, is that?
Wait, I have one more question, sorry, so the, so in order of the vendors, there's a being a vendor fee charged, right? Like, you have to be, pay one of those, does that money go to help offset this, or is it going to something else?
Correct.
Right, what? Which one of those?
Correct, the vendor fee will help offset the expenses, um, but. And when we have the vendor calculation and and those costs, and we'll do a breakdown budget for you at the end of the event. Um, because we show employee wages, um, we show, um. We were able to break it down based on trash, employee wages, um. And any other additional costs such as vendor. Um, or anything else that's gonna be deemed, I don't, I don't foresee that there's gonna be any additional costs besides. This is the major one outside of employees.
So, if eight thousand dollars might not be coming out of the budget, because some money is going into it, so it might end up getting less, I guess.
Right now, we have nine, I think, right? So what I have to do when I say, impact the budget, is I'm saying that, yeah, I can't show in our budget. That exactly that this is the revenue that came in, we have to show the expense from the budget, um. I can tell you on paper when it's over with. What we took in for revenue, so all I can do is speak to the expense right now, because I.
Fire budget management anyway, saying, to make it, make it venture, but as far as the actual. Income versus expenses for the event, do you have a feeling at this point where, you know, are we? Can end up spending a lot of money on this event, or are we gonna be somewhere very even, or make my, I don't know, how does that?
Well, we get very little from RagBri, right?
Five thousand, I think this year.
But we dedicated that to the chamber for their work, um, yeah, yeah, and they have some expenses as far as, you know. For marketing, for getting shirts to identify.
Yeah.
You know.
I think, um, Charles, there were, he wanted thirty, I think, like thirty vendors would be the ideal number, just like twelve thousand dollars, but.
Yeah.
So, that's like at a max, what we get from vendors.
Yeah, and that's if we were getting four hundred each, we have a lot of non, not for profits, so, yeah.
It's only a hundred for now.
Yeah, yeah. I really, I I'm not comfortable with saying, yeah, I mean, because again, it's all estimates, um, hope for the best.
Definitely something that could cost the city money, I mean, like, that's, that's why RagBri started offering cash to cities, because they know how city money do this. But we come out, we come out ahead of the net, gain of publicity and traffic and. Obviously, the vendors, um. Do well, bring out events of the.
Does the city have like a little forest booth? Like to talk about our city and like all that stuff, people. Got our new houses coming up and.
And he's gonna stand there in the street.
And like people on the wheelie where there's air conditioners.
So, um, so there's continued, we would have to have more discussions with, um. With the Redbri committee because they're, they're putting together and we're, we're trying to. You know, be a part, us basically a silent partner to cover all of the operations pieces of it. Um, so I'll definitely, we'll, we'll follow up with them and see what they've got planned for additional booths. In order to market the community, I know they've had discussions on it and I know they've talked about, you know, those things, so. Yeah.
Okay, now good, well, for today's project, uh, approving the. Porta body. Uh, budget here not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars, we have a consensus, that's what we want to do there, option one. And we have a motion and a second. Do that. And any further discussion? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Also say no. Motion carries five to zero. And move on to ten C, a resolution to approve and accept the bid. From SG Construction Company in the amount of seventy four thousand nine hundred fifty eight dollars. For well number two, phase two project, their motion to approve, questions to approve. Moved and seconded to approve, is there any discussion?
One thing I did leave out too is we did have a. Big bed meeting which nobody attended and that got me very nervous that we might not have any vendors. I did even call because Kenny Morris, the local contractor had worked on the. When we were doing the study, we had him redo the hash. So he's familiar with the room, what's going on, and I asked him why he wasn't in the bed. And again, he just said he was just too darn busy to bid, so we, we reached out to him and pressed three or four other. Smaller contractors like that. Kind of guys who do it themselves, you know, SG is more of a contractor, they contract out to get their work. So we did make a lot of efforts, didn't, didn't pay the dividends I was hoping, but.
The timing of it is the issue there, if, if we would have been ready for that maybe. A few months ago.
Maybe what, what, what Kenny told me is the only way he would be able to bid that. Is wait until middle of winter. Cause that's when he would wanna do it, but. Then you're knocking walls down, you're doing things in the winter that wouldn't be easily to bid. I think, I mean, I do think moving forward now, I don't think delaying would be a smart. And I, I, that's my recognition.
And you were saying that's, um. What, 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 what would be the estimate number?
Fifty five thousand.
Fifty five, and then that's seventy five.
So it's substantially above, but. You also had a bid at about ninety. Tricon.
Hundred and eighteen.
A hundred and eighteen.
Yeah.
There, um, they do big projects like that, if you were gonna redo the entire inside of that building or. And do your whole city hall, that's what Tricon does, this would be small for them.
City staff has been happy to work with SG Construction, we work well with them. On the city hall project, um, they did the very room you're setting in now for the library. Um, I, I think that they are, and they watch the numbers, um, they're very diligent with.
They have called three or four times asking if we were gonna recommend.
Yeah.
I keep telling them, I can recommend, but who knows?
So.
I like working with Dan a lot.
Yep, so.
So those aren't my flags, those are your flags checking, like, do they have to go on?
They're, they're, they're headed home this week, so.
I was actually, yes, wondering how to make that joke, but you made it well. That's true, um, actually for our next meeting, the plan is to return this meeting to the city hall, not the chambers. So, we'll be talking about it, uh, definitely the height of the flag, actually probably don't need to do that. Um, so we'll see you all at city hall. Next month. Alright, there's a motion and a second to approve. Uh, this resolution to accept the bid from SG Construction, any further discussion? If none, it's a roll call vote, House Member McFerrin.
Yes.
House Member Dominguez.
Yes.
House Member Smith.
Yes.
House Member Shields.
Yes.
House Member Martinez.
Yes.
The motion. Pathway five to zero.
Now you will call me.
Thank you. Item ten D, a resolution for full-time police officer wage increase. Is there a motion to approve? Moved and seconded to, uh, approve this resolution. Uh, Chief, you wanna walk us through where you have in mind here?
Sure, so I wanna say thank you to Lee and Chair for helping me bring this before you, so. Um, in an effort to try and retain the officers that we have. Um, I've been looking at my budget and looking at historically what we've been spending, so. As far as personnel goes, I have three line items in my budget, once for full-time wages, once for part-time wages, and once for overtime. And when I look at the line for part-time wages, we had a substantial amount that we were not using yearly. For the last several years, so what I proposed was not asking for money, but simply reallocating where the money was in my budget. So I propose, we just hired down, so the salary said, I'm not changing mine. So I'm asking for the remainder of my staff to bump them up, so for the officers. Uh, bumping up a thousand dollars a year and for Sergeant Bearden bumping up fifteen hundred. So again, it's not spending any more money, just reallocating from part-time wages, putting it into salary.
And it will not require a budget amendment, because just as cheap as saying. It's funds that are already allocated in that budget, even in going into fiscal year. Uh, twenty four, I mean, we'll continue to manage, you know, manage it, but, um. Because we had set numbers under part-time, but we, again, as long as we're within the program, then. There will be a need to amend that.
Questions by counsel?
Um, one question I have, how many? Uh, and this is not really related, like, I think this makes sense now, um, how many full-time officers do we have there, if I think, well, how many speak Spanish? Yeah.
I do have, actually, I, I have been looking into, uh, Muscom uses or dispatch center uses something called Language Link. And it is something that the state of Iowa has a contract with this company. And all you do is fill out a form to sort of contract, they give you a contract number, so you dial them up. You give your contract number and tell them the language, and in thirty seconds, they will have a live person. That will conference in and do that call, they also have the ability to do video conferencing. Um, they actually will sell you phones where two people can pick up a handset on our side, if we wanted to do that. Um, they also have, um, document translation services, and it's all, the state already signed a contract, it's more just us saying. Can we also use you?
Oh, well.
So when I'm, I've got the contract, yeah, I've got the contract filled out, um, and I even presented it to the city manager, saying there's other aspects of the city that wanna use it. That's, it's a permanent basis, I think it's fifty seven cents a minute or something like that, I think in the contract, but. Because I don't have that ability right now, to do land that quite a bit, especially when our population is fifty eight percent Hispanic, absolutely. We have a lot of different languages, and I don't know how many languages are spoken in the, in our school district.
Yeah, there are, there are some indigenous dialects that we don't have translators for.
And that's where the language link would be helpful, because when you tell them. Hey, it's West Liberty, hey, I need Portuguese, and then they came up with safety to get bumped up to the top. So they get you a person for, so it's, it'll be a way that we can, you know, business a little bit easier, connect with people a little better. Yeah. That sounds like a great idea.
So, I'm looking at this, it's about eighty three dollars more a month. Taxes, it's not very much.
It's, it's not a lot, um, because my part-time budget in total for a year, I think is twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And as of my. February printout, I had used a thousand. Because, uh, we're just, we're not, that's part of why we came in and increased the amount that we're paying our part-time officers. So just while coming to do any work.
Yeah.
So using a chunk of that, and if there's more room, I would love to get more of my officers. And again, and this is, I'm not giving myself a raise, this is my officer bonus, but. We're giving them something, because the reason that the department's running as well as it is now is because of the staff and my effort, and so I'm trying to do what I can.
Yeah, and I know that you have to have a certain hierarchy and stuff, like for Jack, he's the sergeant. And so maybe that would bring in the other, other officers, I wonder, oh. Maybe, or, but then maybe there's like something else we can do, if they learn Spanish, maybe there's a bonus to that or something.
And that's something that, as we, like, the citizens with the city manager, she talked about. How do we incentivize getting extra to get raises or getting interest or patients, or maybe being bilingual is part of that, so we gotta put that in. Uh, like, maybe it comes in evaluations, or maybe it's in the hiring process, but that's something that she has sort of addressed, yeah.
Sure.
Ally has this suggestion, uh, the library, they just, we just got a ten thousand, or seven thousand five hundred dollar grant. Which will be used towards, um, Exco Rosetta Stone database. Um, which will provide, um, all of, all citizens of West Liberty with a library account. Um, to use Rosetta Stone, which is thirty plus languages, including Brazilian and Latin American Spanish.
What's that? At the weekly annual meeting, Brandon, I can be president of the CEO of West Liberty Foods, lifting off the nationality and languages. That were represented in their workforce, and it was. Six or seven role, distinct, uh, languages there. Why that's about right, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, it was really impressive.
Yeah, Arabic, so that, that sounds like a good thing for the police.
And language, I think, has access to, I think it was two hundred and forty different languages. Yeah, so it's again, it's something that's already existing, I just fill out a piece of paper and it doesn't. Cost anything to start a contract, it's just, and you use it that way you pay, so. So it's something I'm working as well, but.
I wonder if that might.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Could have talked with, uh, with Fire EMS too. Um, to make sure that they.
He brought it at the supervisor meeting, um, and addressed that, yeah.
Well, good. Okay, yeah, you sidetracked this. Are there any other, uh, questions, comments, questions about this wage? Okay. Um, there's a motion and a second to approve the wage decrease, it's a roll call vote, House Member McFerrin.
Yes.
House Member Dominguez.
Yes.
House Member Smith.
Yeah.
House Member Schultz.
Yes.
House Member Martinez.
Yeah.
The resolution passed with five to zero, thank you. Yeah, thank you. That seems like a great idea. Uh, ten E, setting the date for the press meeting for budget amendments for fiscal year ending June thirtieth. The meeting at May thirtieth at six P M. If there are motions to approve, and then we'll discuss.
Motion.
Move and second to through, city manager Gertz, can you kind of touch me here?
Yep, uh, due to the timeline of setting a public hearing. Um, I had to adjust this to May thirtieth. To have a special meeting to have the budget amendment approved, it's people, it's in front of you. Um, there are notes, I'm, I know, they give me this tiny little box for squish. All of that information in, um, so. I can definitely send the bigger description over to you before we meet. Uh, but it primarily is going over everything we've covered in the last year. Yeah, it has, um, the information and, and pertaining to the American Rescue Dollars. Um, it talks about, cause we have to show how it is transferred in and then how it's expensed out. It has the, um, the rescue gator, um, it also, in addition to that, has, um. The expenses for electric have gone up because. Um, we had to, we ordered some pieces of equipment for inventory. And likewise, the costs, uh, this year in order to operate the electric utility as for, um. That was, um, higher than what we had originally estimated. Um, for, uh, the cost with our wholesale. Uh, to generate or to have the purchase for our community. Um, then we have with the streets department, we, uh. No, I'm sorry, with our solid waste, we moved forward with purchasing our rear load truck, which we hadn't planned until the next, but because. Of the, because of the value that we could get with the existing one, it was a good fiscal decision to move forward and move that up. Um, and we put that in line with increasing the garbage rates, so, um, again, that fund is. Is staying healthy and with those rates will continue to grow that. Um, so in the future, when it comes to purchasing those equipments, we'll hope to reserve a little more money, uh, on future purchases.
So this is kind of a final adjustment for this, this year.
Yep, yeah.
The batting cage is about to replace the one.
Um, no, that was the batting, yeah, well, that was the batting cage we. But it's the one we got destroyed, so, and I am currently working through claims right now. For insurance, for insurance, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we're working through the insurance claims on, um. Uh, those things. And I'll have that information to you.
Yeah.
In the future.
So just for counsel, where this is a, it's not a regular meeting day, right? So it's May thirtieth.
Yeah, it's this whole day, it's the emergency day, you know, right? So if I have any problem.
We're at six thirty. Yeah. This will not take us very long at all.
There you go, be here.
I will be in rehearsal, I can do roll call the first time, too, but I will be able to.
It is, this one would be fine to zoom in to.
Yes, yes, you can zoom in. Yeah, that's why I wanted to get the. Yeah.
I don't think, uh.
Yeah, don't, yeah. As long as I have a quorum, we'll be.
Yeah.
I think by that time, we should be able to have that, or okay, for city hall.
Really actually can't be on Moon that night, so. You can zoom in, oh, okay. Okay. Great, there's a motion and a second to approve this date for the, the budget amendments, any further discussion?
So if you have any questions with the information, please feel free to reach out between now and then. Um, we can go over that, so you're, where is, yeah.
City Hall.
City Hall.
Once I get that agenda set, I will get that out to you, but we should be able to have that at city hall. Um, since we will be starting the meetings there at that first week of June, that's all.
Any further discussions? Okay, all of the papers say aye.
Aye.
I'll post in, I'll, I'm curious, five to zero, lastly, I have ten F, setting a date. For the Fire EMS, EMS twenty eight D agreement. Work session on June sixth. At six P M, so that's a regular council meeting date, okay? So it'd be a work session at six P M, uh, we'll talk about it a little bit, but is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Moved and seconded to approve this date. Wanna talk about what the shot is there?
So, um. After a lot of discussion, especially Solen, having that, that kind of chat with. That heart to heart to Solen, um, Solen's the city administrator, there's been a lot of compromise. And I think some, some great strides in pro- proposing a more finalized, um. Proposal to you all. Um, and that's what we wanna talk about, we're having one more meeting on Monday, it sounds like through the. Email that I just got from one of the other parties on the county, or on the task force as well, they. Uh, everything looks good, that we might be in agreement about almost everything. So, um, we'll be just going through everything separated the bylaws, so it's easier to see. Um, it's, it's very much more laid out and clear. So hopefully, we can talk about the next steps as well, like. What we need to vote on and what, if we do still, we still need to have a consultant, we may not.
Okay, so it's still just written by you guys, no one's professional.
Sorry, have any of the lawyers edited it yet?
Yes, so we've made several changes based on like what our city attorney said. Um, based on even the fire chief, you know, was kind of brought in and agreed that this new. Path that is very similar to what Solen is doing, um, might be what we need to do, so.
Is there any way we can do that ahead of time, or do we only get to redo it? Um, I think we should have everything ready, if that's okay, we could for. Is that?
Will it be in the pack?
Uh, it would be in the packet, but also after you guys meet as well on Monday, when you guys are going through things, and that is also something that we can discuss. And we'll get time to.
I think the final draft, we have to get, when we have to get, um. And we can explain.
Yep, this is just the work session to go over the items that are included in.
Yep, this is just the work session to go over the items that are included in that document.
Yeah, and I actually have, have drafted an email to Haverkamp and copied, um. The mayor and city manager to invite him to that. Action on the six as well, so he can just be there for questions, and he'll see it in advance as well.
Alright, so this is, uh, one, one step closer to the actual documents that you would vote on as a council, remember the last. Time that the task force presented, it was a kind of a working document with a lot of data all. Put in one document, this is, uh, a little bit closer to what you would actually vote on. There really have to be, there's, there are five. There are five documents that have to basically all be ready and voted on while you at the same time. There's the, uh, twenty-eighty agreement itself, which is like a charter that, that, uh. Starts this agency, the proposed agency, shares the bylaws that kind of op, manage the operating. Um, the operation of that agency, there's a lease agreement, um, to lease the. Assets to the agency, there is a settlement agreement which would provide for the dissolution of the lawsuits. Between the rural trustees. And there is. You'll have to do some work to adjust the. Uh, West Liberty City Code that now provides for. Fire EMS, EMS services, but kind of all those things have to happen at once, right? Um, so this. These first two documents are actually drafted now, and separate the charter and the.
Well, the lease is also drafted, I just need Haverkamp to put it in his forms, but it's basically done. You know, he just has to. Give it its blessing, so the lease, the bylaws, and the charter are all done, so it would be, it would be the attorneys. Um, their attorneys are attorneys that would draft the settlement. Um, which basically hopefully would say, hey, this is our compromises, you know. Um, and then it would be, um, the, the administration that, and the attorneys that would work on. What do we need to do to change the code? Um, if this particular.
Very good progress. Any other questions or discussion about that?
So the only other thing is now that I was really looking forward to having that first meeting at the, you know, city. Hall, but now I just don't know if we think that. Should we consider having a larger venue? Do you think that there's going to be with the work session? Do you, do you think that would be more people that would be interested in attending to listen to?
And the trustees might need it there, so, you know.
It, it is a, like, the last one we did was a kind of more of a joint meeting, the way it was designed, this would be a, a meeting for you and the council, so. There certainly may be whether we can want.
So we'll reach out to the community center and see if we can.
Okay. If that date, uh, works for everybody, any further discussion? All of you, please say hi, uh, there's a motion and a second to, uh, set the date for June sixth for this work session. All of you, please say aye. All of us, you know.
I have a motion to make, I have a motion to close, wait, I already forgot how to do it. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.